Four words.
Hey, just want you to know, I got this stream running out.
Alright. No, it's working.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry. More than I don't know, please. That's what I'm doing.
She's doing okay. Yes. She moved, moved the barn around a little the other day, so.
Alright, alright. Making progress.
Yeah.
Jack, you want me to hand this to Clay then? Nah, I got her on. Has he got anything additional? Does he have anything additional on him?
Your turn.
I'm gonna get away this, instead of the, uh, the, uh, what I'm supposed to. I wanted to make, stick, uh, uh, what else? Uh, I think a lot of what the lady said married, uh, and now it's been, uh, a huge, uh, I don't know, I go. Oh, man, you're all much. I would have, she always think she'd have. With, uh, gossip. Things that was done. Yeah. You should be good.
And I like Sandra, I like, uh, 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 what's it?
One of them's small.
We'll talk about it when I'm ready.
Yep, but, uh, yeah, that's her, what's her name? What's this lady down there, Union Bank, or whatever they're calling themselves this week?
Beverly Teal?
No, 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 that's one of them. Shelley, Shelley, there it is, there it is. I like them, and there's somebody that's very nice with the rest of them. I think it was Wellsburg. Sir, no.
You've been shot.
Don't ask him that, that doesn't sound right at all.
I shot the sheriff. Yeah, let's see if you don't complain about it today.
I know, right? Hey, Jack.
I don't know how to turn them, I've tried all the things, which is.
Get this down in the.
I've hit them all, Roger, I don't know which one else. Like.
Hey, so Jack, we got a folder. Says stick V one and then a lot of other stuff, so. We're looking at both things.
Oh, you're the IT man?
Yeah, man, Bruce.
I was gonna make sure. So you got all this done. Snacks. This is the agenda.
Are you doing that purple?
Like, you got two today, though? Like, you got two today.
I am.
That's a promotion.
I don't know, they might fire me. They might fire me for this.
I don't miss pride.
Nah, yeah, you're right, yes, ma'am. Yeah, all top seeds. Uh, Brian's got three stuff. Brian's got, uh, a quick request, uh, the one that I have is. It needs to sink. And we got all eight specs on. Yeah. Jerry's. Uh, that's my family advertising. P R A. P R A. Point party, R S I, and then point D R. Then it's P R A, that, uh. If you got eight system talk, but then Gary and they'll, I don't know. Jerry and them want to, uh, point. Krista's family. She's already applied, I'll just do her, just go out and finish up Dave. That work, yeah, I mean, that's, you need to end of this month. So whatever, okay.
When is that?
The day of system. Uh, E was, um, so we need to reappoint.
What?
Yeah, Krista's wheels, so I'll point to them.
Yeah, I, yeah, for all those.
Yes. I respect. I thought I had them cheeky. Wait, he should be.
And Jack, you didn't make these hard copies of this in the. You did? I bummed you out.
Like, we believe that for a show.
That's her thing, I don't have a man like that, I gotta look. Yes, it was nice. You got mail, you got mail. Yeah.
What they want? Yeah.
Yeah.
No.
Yes.
December.
Um. Signing. Twenty, twenty-two.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Murray.
I can hear you too. No, we're, our heads are in the middle of that.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's over there, but, I guess, got something on the outside right now. Okay. Okay. Cool. Yeah. Oh, we're paid, so, see what's going on.
Yeah, I'm like.
Alright, how are you?
Yeah.
Right, that's right.
Oh, I didn't see that. Same.
Yeah. It's super visual. That's us. That's why I need to walk.
He was tired of. Tenure.
I'm just kidding, Roger, we worked at the, didn't work out, I think, from last week's safety work.
Yeah. Is that right?
And I'm kind of surprised that didn't happen. How about the stores? And, uh, some, some people, that's bullshit.
Yeah.
Y'all ready? Uh, y'all ready, gentlemen? Alright, um, like I said before, supervisor, I mean, the order is always, let's start with pledge allegiance and no missile. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, due to a public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Alright, thank you. Um, we do have a forum, we do need to adopt an agenda, um, just, um, I guess, under new business, um, need to add appointment of interim finance director.
Number nine?
Number nine, yes, sir. Um, other than that, everything seems to be added, uh, by department. Um, the only other one is that six-year plan, public hearing, and was advertised for six. We're gonna have to wait till six, hopefully we get a good intermission. Um, anybody else have anything we need to add?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Alright, motion made, and seconded, further discussion. Here, no, no, I'm very significant, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Um, let's start with public comment. Public comment. Public comment. Legging, a lot of, a lot of public comment on there.
Uh, there'd be none.
Yeah, well, there you go. Alright, we're coming back for a comment at the end of this. Um, Ms. Hallow, why don't you give us a report on Crigleyville, swinging bridges, and where you're at?
I guess technically, no, it is, okay. I saw, it wasn't hooked up, but it's broadcasting. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for giving us this opportunity today to report on the swinging bridges. Um, we've been working on it, and so I just wanted to give you an update as to things, uh, we've accomplished and things that still need to be done at this point. So the, the good news is, uh, we now have the approval of all the landowners, uh, they've agreed to donate their land, should we be able to work out, uh, the foundation and the bylaws and all that, and, um, from meeting with the landowners, uh, we sort of know what they need, and so, uh, they're on board, and so that's, that's great, and, um, I think, I'll take the time for just a little story, not too long, but the last one, uh, we met with was Mr. Kitchen, and, um, Ellen Early was able to establish, uh, a meeting with him, and, uh, we went up and had a great conversation with him, and he relayed to us how when he was a little boy, he would walk across the swinging bridge every day, uh, to get to the elementary school, and then on the way home, he would stop at the store, which is now Possum Store, to pick up the family mail, uh, if he had a nickel, he would get a Coke, and then he'd walk back across the swinging bridge, uh, to his house, and he said, uh, you know, it's a wonderful times, and, um, he would love to do whatever he can to help the bridge be restored, so, I think that was a, a, a great way to have the fifth member on board. So we have that, we also have a budget worked up, tentative budget, uh, for ten years of, uh, maintenance of the bridge, it comes to about a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, but, uh, Renee, I'll tell you in just a little bit, we have a number of fundraisers planned to try to achieve that money. Um, we do actually, uh, just, just received, uh, a quote on insurance for the bridges, so we know, uh, what that's gonna be, or roughly in the budget, and, um, it's expensive, but it's doable, so that's a good thing. Um, the, um, the, uh, probably trickiest thing is, um, we are still working on finding, uh, an attorney, uh, to set this up for us, and, um, also establish a fiscal agent, so that we can, uh, bring in funds, um, as a nonprofit, before achieving our nonprofit status. So that's been a difficult thing, we've, we've reached out to a number of attorneys, and, um, they're either too busy or just something. Um, but I've been in contact, and as early as this morning, with, uh, Jane Bowlin Wilson at the Northern Piedmont Community Foundation, and she has, uh, uh, a potential lead, and, um, also, uh, has offered, she said she's very interested in this project, and will try to work with us to, um, establish, uh, get an attorney, establish, uh, fiscal agent and so forth, and so, we'll try to have a meeting next week to do that, so that's been a, a tough one, uh, but we're, we're still working on, I think that's the thing that's holding this up the most. Um, we haven't, uh, had any more, uh, formal exchange with, with VDOT as far as, uh, their contributions and so forth, but that's, that, that's in the future. Um, we also have a, a working community group, uh, I think it's a, it's a pretty good group of people, that, um, we've gotten together, it includes the landowners, but also some key people, Tracy and, and others, that, um, should be able to help us establish, uh, a board for the foundation when the time comes, and, um, um, yeah, I think that's sort of where things stand, but it looks like, you know, things have been moving along a little slower than we, we'd hoped, because of just all these issues, it's pretty complicated, uh, I have to admit, more complicated than I thought it was gonna be, and so. Isn't it always like that? But, you know, we, we, we keep plugging away at it, and so, um, I think maybe the thing to do is, is, uh, just at this point, you know, we'd like to, to reach out to the community and say, yeah, if there's, if there's somebody out there, an attorney, anybody that wants to get involved and help us, you know, please, please, this is the time to start getting on board, and, um, with that, I think I'll turn it over to Renee, just to talk a little bit about, uh, some of the fundraisers that are planned, which will also give you a little more information about, uh, some of the participants, and how we hope to raise that hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, so.
So I'm just gonna quickly go over, we're, we're planning a number of fundraisers, so currently, we have three fundraisers planned. One in August, one in September, and another in October, and the first one will be at Possum Store, and we're going to have a community art contest. Uh, anybody can enter it, two to two-hundred years old, it doesn't matter, it will, um, also be judged, and Possum Store will, um, sponsor prizes for that, the work will be on display for a month, and during the exhibit, we're having a poster of the bridge designed, and we'll unveil the poster at the opening, and a hundred percent of all proceeds from the poster sales will go to the bridge fund. Um, we'll also take donations and contributions during the, throughout the month, towards the bridge. The second fundraiser is, we're, we're working together with Grave Mountain Lodge to do a community day up at the lodge, and so it'll be a, a day of food and music, and just a community gathering. Uh, they have offered to donate a percentage of all food sales to the bridge fund, and so we're working with them on that, and we hope to iron out the details on that. The third is Betty and Earl Martin have offered their barn to do, this will be the, the largest of the three fundraisers, it's gonna be a barn dance, um, we've arranged a seventeen-piece big band, we're working on caterers, and that will be a ticketed event, as well as an, an art auction. So those are the three community events that we're planning, and then we will reach out for private donations, and we're also in the process of writing a GoFundMe campaign, and the goal is to raise the hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, and we currently have about seven thousand dollars that people have committed to this, as soon as we get all the, the proper, um, things in place, so, I feel like we're moving forward on this one, it's, it's just getting the organization set up, so we can start accepting the, the donations.
Anybody have any questions? Sounds great.
Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all, thank you all. Alright. Um, alright, incentive agenda, we have minutes from May eleventh, we have, uh, what, three, Fourth of July fireworks, um, permits or applications, and then we've got the. um, permits or applications, and then we have the payments of the bond proceeds. If you have any questions, thoughts, is there a vote on that?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second, motion made and seconded, further discussion? Here in the line, favorite signature, probably say aye.
Aye.
I put the same sign. All right, um, constitutional officers, county departments, committees, and organizations, Ms. Frye, um, where are we at?
Oh, my, I, I'll put in your package, you have a list of the, uh, committee, for the county administration service board, also you will need to reappoint supervisor Allen to, um, continue on the, uh, rapid answer authority and also, uh, appoint an alternate. Mr. Tracy mentioned that a system of the PRA has resigned, so you'll need to appoint someone to fill an expired term through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Also, we still need, uh, someone to fill community CPT, and the Rockhead, you know, detention center, the finance committee, and the, uh, finance director, and also, um, Ms. Allen's slot on the CPT is still vacant. I had reached out to Tinkley, and I know they haven't found anyone yet, so they'll call me when they think that would be looking to serve.
Um, all right, what about, let's start with the ones that are the worst, or the best. Uh, CPMT, anybody, we're just gonna continue, hoping somebody shows up, I guess. Is that where we're at? Oh, man, that's a moment. Um, Cardi and an alternate, I'd be glad to, I went to their meeting two weeks ago now, I'd be glad to be an alternate, all, what do you all want to do, one with Cardi and one with an alternate? Anybody else wanna do it? Let's, uh, let's, let's, what do you, what do you all want to do on this one?
I've moved to, you point, Cardi Allen. Remember, and use the alternate.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, further discussion? Here, for your turn, congratulations. Um, all right, uh, motion made and seconded, further discussion? Here in the line, favorite signature, probably say aye. Aye. I put the same sign. Um, the other one, PRA, Dave Sisson had an unexpired term that goes till December twenty-twenty-two, Ms. Frye. Um, we have Krista Tanner had applied previously, um, talked to Jerry and staff, and they think that she would be great, what do you all want to do on that one?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Krista Tanner for the PRA.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, uh, discussing, so Krista is going to fill the, the rest of Dave's term till December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
Oh, okay. Is that the date, Ms. Frye?
Yes, I'm very well there, that's all right.
Yeah, I'm gonna do here. Oh, excuse me, I apologize, I apologize for people. Uh, motion made and seconded, further debate? Here in the line, favorite signature, probably say aye. Aye. I put the same sign. All right, Mr. Hobbs is on the school CIP committee, we got two of us on there currently, Shandora committee, now you, Kevin. Tracy and who else? Tracy, you on there, and not just you and Hobbs?
I think you.
And you.
I think I'm an alternate.
Does, does anybody wanna fill this position while we don't have a county administrator? We don't, not every, oh, the, the Shandora committee.
It celebrates Shandora, right?
No, I just have, is it the same, celebrate and Shando?
That's the Blue Ridge.
Oh, yeah, Blue Ridge committee.
They're not meeting right now, that's different Shando.
So we don't need to fill that one, there you go. Um, deputy director of emergency management, we don't have anybody, um, Raffahannick, Raffinellon, regional commission. Ms. Hoffman, you go into that one? Yeah, there you are, are you, uh, yeah, yeah, you're, you're affiliated with him of some type, did we appoint you to this board at one time?
We should, the, the regional commissioner, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, so we've got somebody there, we're gonna be one vacant. Um, the Central Virginia Economic Development partnership, well, what do they do, Hobbs? Is that? Does anybody, would, would anybody like to fill that void forward without?
What do they do?
When do they meet, Ms. Hobbs?
And I have it virtual as well.
Ah, it's convenient.
All of you actually are invited to that.
Ah, correct, well, we need to designate somebody that will definitely be there. Uh, anybody wanna do this one? How's it? Please have an approach.
Or if you can, I could possibly do, because I'll be in charge.
Well, that's, we, that's, we can, I have to.
Yeah.
Would y'all like to take this position on as an interim basis? Until we can find a county administrator?
Yeah, we can.
All right, who, who would like to do this? Does anybody wanna make a motion once they volunteer?
So it's what Friday?
Twenty-ten.
Two Friday. Okay, I'll do that.
All right. Wanna make a motion, or you just gonna shake your head, possibly?
I move to, Amber Foster, as the, you know, the brother, I don't think that was the partnership.
All right.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, further discussion? Here in the line, favorite signature, probably say aye. Aye. I put the same sign.
I do have a question, I'm already a part of that. Is that just for the county?
There's something else.
So not the board?
Now you, now you're truly official, okay.
Wow.
Yeah, I think that's the right response. Um, all right, we just did our side, we did have, um, our finance director on the CPMT team, and we're having trouble just filling this regular spot on that, um, the other one was the Raffahannick Juvenile Detention Center, and didn't, uh, Nan Koppage doing that as well? This was on the finance committee, correct?
Yeah.
Um, well, anybody wanna, that's in Stafford, we wanna advertise that one, we just gonna wait that one out for a minute. All right, let's, let's see if we can, y'all wanna wait this one out a little bit? I agree with that, I, we're, um, and then we need to fill Brenda Allen's position. Got friends that wanna get into CPMTs, there you go. Um, all right, work our way around here. Um, Mr. Weaver, good to see you.
Oh, good to see you, sir.
What, uh, you got anything to report back there?
You're number nine, so I'll take your, my issue, is that correct?
Uh, yes, yes it is.
Thank you.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Um, thank you. Ms. Laug, anything going on?
Quite as busy as what we, then, we did, uh, eighty thousand to the state, sent thirty-one thousand six hundred to the county, we recorded, uh, two hundred and twenty land records, nineteen judgments, and we did eight marriage licenses, eight profe, but May term, Dave, uh, we had initiated fifty-eight new cases, so June, July, and August will be very busy, and, uh, only did twenty-four concealed, I think that's a low.
All right, any questions, Ms. Laug? Ms. Laug, Roger?
Um, the remodel at four fourteen has come along, I was in there last night, and that seemed to be, uh, gone pretty good, we thought we were gonna have an issue with time on the tile in the bathroom, but luck yesterday, they finished the tile in the bathroom, so they're working in the whole, man. Um, hopefully they're gonna be on schedule to move when, when I want to move.
And that's, uh, June twenty-seventh? Oh, there you go.
Twenty-six.
All right.
Um, I am trying to get the signs made so that when we do get moved, it'll be a whole lot easier for people, but I thought I made it pretty simple on the signs, but evidently it was, it was hard, so I had to, I had to adjust them a little bit.
It's like a dozen signs down there, what, what, what is so complicated? Where would you put additional signs?
Actual pad here, and when they, when they saw that, they turned around and left.
Ah.
It was in front of the building, so they, they don't cross the sign, but they just left, so I peeled all that off, then they started going to the building.
Ah, good, good.
So, either way.
All right.
So, I was mad, I think, I put, I did take the steel, the whole steel, it was over by the dice, Charlesville yesterday, to see what kinda option we got, that they either get that remade or fixed to kinda be the same size as the one that's gonna be on the left.
Very good.
So, that's where we all.
And there's been some concern, it will say, in God we trust.
We will, and it's gonna have Virginia on the ball.
There you go, all right. Anything for Roger? Miss, Mr. Daniels, what you got going on?
Uh, like a lot of personal power, we gotta get that messed up. Got our, our final new counter yesterday, I believe, and it's working very. That's it.
Now, how much farther are, if you got your counter, are we, do we have the final inspection other than just a temporary CO at this point? I don't know, what else we got down there?
There's a few more boxes I have to be fixed, but the old work guy's gonna do it when they come to do the billwork at four fourteen, so.
Okay. All right, uh, any questions, Brian? Ligon?
Um, so, the, uh, Raithers against county has been delayed till October, and in the interim, uh, plant commission's gonna work next couple of weeks on the, uh, revised cell tower ordinance, which is, uh, my version takes it from six thousand words to three thousand words. Um, on the second Raithers suit, uh, versus Crestor Ray, we had our preliminary hearing, called a demur, it's a couple of legal terms I've learned, but, um, we've been waiting for six months for that to happen, and the day of the demur, that was delayed because the case ran over, so we're gonna do the demur the afternoon of, uh, six-thirty, uh, June thirtieth, uh, so we'll, we'll get to hear that all afternoon. Otherwise, um, other things going on, the plant commission, the solar folks, uh, still kind of trying to make a decision how they wanna move forward, uh, you know, we've had several conversations with them, um, other than that, um, Mr. Jackson talked about this event, uh, ordinance that I've made some changes to the event, uh, excuse me, the event regulation ordinance, we can explain a little bit why that's coming about, about, I think it's pretty straightforward and fairly convenient, uh, and easy to follow, hopefully, otherwise everything's good down in our office.
All right, any questions for Ligon? I think, no.
So May was a busy month, we did a hundred and forty-two calls, uh, averaged response time of nine minutes, um, working through some personnel changes, um, that seems to be region-wide, um, will be exact orders down seven medics, that's just. Um, still working with AMS, um, IT outfit for the interim station, and attached to my packet was the, uh, best quote from Burton Prophet on the site study plan, and, uh, that air scramble, and then went well. Questions for me?
Anything for Noah?
I've got, I've got, um, not a question, but a comment, I've got several people texting me, marking this on their computer, and they're asking, please use the mic, say who I am.
All right, can we hand that mic around? Ligon, hand that mic to Brian, boy, he's next. There you go.
Okay, um, as you all know, we got several big projects going, trying to be too much of an echo here, um, radio project in Northern End Tower Site, we've been working on that pretty much nonstop for the last month and a half, trying to figure out exactly, but the MNC came back to us and said that the road study up there was gonna be elaborate, um, expensive is what they use, we're trying to nail that down and figure out exactly what that means. We are also looking at backup sites, um, send letters out to a couple of different landowners, uh, one landowner now, I'm still looking at another one, um, to try and narrow that down, in the event that this turns out to be something that we don't wanna do, you know, if it's gonna be a road that's gonna be astronomical in cost, we're certainly not gonna go down that road. So I'm also working with AMS on a fiber run from ECC to Hoover Ridge site, which is, the geotech came back the other day, and that site looks like it's gonna start moving here pretty quickly with Jamie and his crew over at the building inspection department, um, I am taking future growth into account with that fiber run, I've got, again, there's looking at several different options that could help us in the future, uh, for expansion of Hoover Ridge, schools, whatever may come up, so we'll have fiber there in the future, so it's not gonna broadside, we'll have more opportunity there if that comes out. Next generation number one project is still on hold pending motorways availability to come in and reconfigure our systems, they are looking at October, uh, we are working really hard to get them to move that up and to expand their personnel, uh, the biggest problem is COVID hit them hard, now everybody's project's happening at once, they don't have the personnel to deal with it, so they're working on expanding their personnel for that. Uh, switching hats a little bit, John shares out of town this week, our last COVID clinic is tomorrow from eight-thirty, excuse me, eight to ten-thirty in the morning, I think it's second dose for a hundred and thirty-eight, if I'm not mistaken. And on that front, um, switch hats again, the fire department has hosted this thing, and a lot of traffic has ensued with that, would the board be willing to help us out with getting floors resurfaced in the fire department?
It's gonna cost, what, three thousand bucks?
Ballpark three thousand.
Uh, I would think that we could, or put this back to FEMA with, uh, hosting COVID clinics as an excuse to potentially, is that an accurate depiction of the norm?
I think that's right.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get a confirmed number, so we know exactly what we're looking at and we'll work for, towards that, I can be a little.
Y'all wanna go ahead and, uh, I think we just go ahead and, um, personally, I'm inclined to approve this, just on the basis that, fire department's been just great for allowing us to do this there and serve Madison County like they always do, um, we all want to. In motion.
Well, we, um, we wouldn't, we don't even know, we have a not to exceed to put on it or anything, you know, quite at this point, but, but, yeah, I move that we support the refinishing of the, of the floors.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, further discussion? I, I, I agree with you, normally, I'd put something in there, they're gonna do it in the right way, right? We put a little bit of use on there, so I'm gonna get to work.
I mean, I'll make sure it stays tight budget.
Um, further discussion? Here in the line, favorite signature, probably say aye. Aye. I put the same sign. All right, anything else, Mr. Gordon? Very good, wait, just so that it's publicly discussed, since we've, uh, this is the last of the second round clinics.
Correct.
People that still want the COVID vaccine, which direction are y'all advising them to go?
The health department and Culver River Hospital, and, uh, Brad's shop is still taking calls until June thirtieth, so that he can point people in the right direction there, and then after that, if anybody has an issue, certainly call myself or John, and we'll get in the right spot.
Very good, thank you, bro. All right, take the mic back there to Tracy, would you? And Tracy, uh, what do you have going on?
I'll go over the main ones here, um, the biggest news, of course, is the executive order seventy-nine lifting the mask and capacity requirements, we've made an effort to put the word out, but not everyone is going maskless yet, some businesses will still require it, please honor their wishes to do so, so they can stay open. Um, on that note, a lot of people still need help, help wanted, literally, so trying to get the word out on that, too, with Virginia Career Works, um, they will post jobs, and I've had people sending me stuff, some businesses had to close on weekends because they did not have help, so we're working on that, uh, we have another tenant upstairs at the visitor center, um, and that was for one of the offices, that's two hundred dollars per month. You don't have to do that. Um, and then we have seen a notable spike in visitors coming in the visitor center, so that's a good sign, lots of people looking at doing weddings, many, many phone calls about Airbnbs, there's gonna be a plethora of Airbnb soon, and a couple other business things going on that I'm not allowed to talk about yet, um, but just some inquiries. Working with a couple of our wineries on grants, a couple different types of grants, working on a, with a different business with the, um, meat processing facility for another AFID grant, Wanderlove Grant paid for another short video highlighting the new love work at Prince Michelle, um, attending the Central Virginia Partnership for Economic Development meetings, and I did send you guys the invitation that we just got today, and I'm also sending that to the IDA as well. the invitation that we just got today, and I'm also sending that to the I D A as well. Uh, Crafting a New Normal Grant hosted another webinar today, um, I'm attending the Vaco broadband seminar tomorrow, Kevin and I have met, we're moving forward with that, um, the biggest takeaway from the state still is not to rush, make it universal coverage, you've got till two thousand twenty-six to spend the money, so, not to skimp, basically is what they're saying, take your time, be patient. Uh, B dot permit for the parade, the parade is on, the county fair is on, I've heard rumors that someone said, I said Taste Mountains is, is happening, it is not happening this year, so, want to make sure we get that word out, Pals have been great to work with, and I'm going to be working Susan Pell on fundraising for Spring Bridges as well. That's about it, and fundraisers, um, as for, um, all the events, of course, on the website, but I know Ball Top's doing one for the fire department on Sunday, Way Jennings, Wayland Jennings grandson's going to be performing there, so that's a pretty big deal.
Questions for Tracy?
Yeah, I got one quick question, so, questions are coming in about Airbnbs, people want to set up an Airbnb or want to find a place to stay?
We get those all the time, but wanting to set up.
So, okay.
Essentially, it's my right, they just have to pay their transient occupancy tax, like.
And that's what we want, we want them to contact us, they do it properly.
Yeah. All right, other questions for Tracy? Francois, I assume you're here from the Planning Commission? Yes, ma'am, well, what, what, what is the Planning Commission currently working on?
Well, uh, Ligon has said it all, so.
Oh, yeah, install the.
Yes, just wondering what's happening with broadband.
Well, we can get a report here shortly.
Tracy just came in.
There you go.
Yeah, we're meeting with, uh, R I C.
R I C next.
Peter and Tracy. How long is that going to play?
That's a conference, that's not a conference.
I want it.
That's it?
All right, Megan?
Hello, um, so we are in peak kitten season right now, um, I have about twenty-eight, but twenty spoken for, and then the rest, um, will go with our PetSmart partnership, so we'll send them there to be adopted. Um, we also have a stray emu, um, so.
Well, of course you do.
So, if anyone knows, anyone that raises them, um, they'll have to show proof of ownership, um.
You can't, you can't track down the owner of this emu, I mean, I'd, I'd assume that there's not a whole lot of people with emus, but.
Yeah, so that's, yep, another reason I'm here.
Local insurance agent, maybe.
Um, in other news, the toppings committee previously approved, uh, a not to exceed of seventy-five hundred for the fencing, um, the new quote is nine thousand four hundred eighty-six, so I am asking for a possible approval of that, and it's because of material costs.
And that is coming from toppings fund.
Correct.
We all think. You gotta keep that emu in.
What was it, ninety-seven?
What was the total again?
Ninety-four eighty-six. Eighty-six, ninety-four eighty.
I move to, what's that? We'll call it not the shelter.
I don't, probably not, but we, we all know what we're talking about, go ahead.
They, they, uh, spend the ninety-four eighty-six of toppings funding on complete fencing.
Second.
Um, motion made in second, further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signature five percent nine, high, place same sign, uh, and everyone will make some more of the news jokes, but, um, all right, all right, um, moving on, old business, uh, Ms. Frye, where are we at with the Socrates Guide, I see Mr. Burke over there, what?
He had sent that letter to me.
Yes, ma'am.
It's in your packet, and I think he said he wanted to come to provide some information and answer any questions that you all may have, if you're okay with what he, uh, has submitted, I can't, I don't know, letter, I just, I need to know who he wanted to send it to, so.
Yes, I spoke to Mr. Hobbs about this previously, is it something that we should be sending to all the counties or is it something that we could send to Vaco and ask Vaco to support and send all the counties? Thank you.
That, that's the typical way things should be distributed throughout the state. Vaco serves as a critical, that's what. Any county wants.
Sure.
And I think, they do have a.
All right, Mr. Burke?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that's a perfectly acceptable alternative to us.
All right, um, what, what about the, uh, you, you have a thousand hard copies, right?
We, we do.
How are we going to distribute those?
Well, um, again, if we could get a ration system from Vaco, uh, that would be helpful, um, we have the public health sector pretty well covered through U D A Health, uh, but it's other groups like first responders and so forth, uh, county administrators perhaps, and I think Vaco could do a good job of helping us with that.
Well, all right, um, which direction y'all want to go, do you all want to send letters to all counties? Would you rather just send to Vaco and let them go through it, and maybe they could implement some type of response and get you, I don't know, an order form or two once wide or something of that nature? I think, I think that's, Vaco is the direction to go, um, we do have a letter, I'm sure we could kind of play with that just a little bit and make it to the Vaco instead of specific counties, I think that would be probably the more appropriate direction to go, does that work for everybody? Because I was, want to get something together and we see if we can get something down there too? All right, everybody good on that? Yes. Anything else? Spark off, thank you, um, all right, any other old business we're missing? Mr. Hobbs, let's go to new business and F Y twenty-two appropriation resolution.
Yes, sir. Package number six is a, uh, resolution that would appropriate the operating budget for the company here. Number, this first one is.
Fourteen, fourteen.
One there's the room?
Yes, sir.
So, the scheme on this is this would fully appropriate every any operating. That's the, uh, plan for the operating budget, it's supposed to, five years for the partial year's population.
The total, the total on resolution twenty-one, twenty dash, or twenty, twenty-one dash fourteen is fifty-eight million, five twenty-three, four seventy-eight. Um, it's the general operating budget and the breakdown categorically for the schools like they need. Um, Child Service Act, county debt, transient occupancy, and then the total all rounded out. Um, if they have any questions on this, comments, what would y'all like to do?
No, other than, yeah, I, I went through, I checked it against what was advertised, it's all straight up, and then went back through, we had these multiple sheets.
Yes, sir.
Um, I checked the numbers against that too, so, just, just checking, checking.
Very good.
Uh, with that, Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we approve, um, resolution twenty twenty-one dash fourteen.
Second.
Motion's made in second, further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signature five percent nine, high, place same sign, all right, Mr. Hobbs, um, supplemental appropriations, or, I guess, let's not do supplemental appropriations, let's do twenty twenty-one dash fifteen, which is capital budget.
Uh, the supplemental, the capital budget, and there is a role, tricky because, uh, practice and regulations do not pass everything that you think that capital budget, things are accepted. Uh, one of the capital budget for interprocessing technology that will probably consume, uh, like. Here's the capital dollars in the asset question, uh, part one, two, in the name of the station, so, we might do that at this point, and some, uh, thousand dollars of some agency lines that, um, turn forward. But yes, and this, this, uh, remaining estimated cost for three different capital budgets, and that's, uh, and the administration, uh, some project, you also still can have a bottom line, I would take to regular part of the worst, and we promise.
All right, questions on this?
I'm having a map on that, so I can see.
Yep. Let's play it in the morgue. Twenty twenty-one dash fifteen.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'm looking at, uh, resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifteen.
Second.
Motion made in second, further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signature five percent nine, high, place same sign, so, let's go to the supplemental appropriations.
Uh, what the Texas progress is going to be. So, also, uh, a series of actions that are not taken, all of them, so, one, two, seven, two, and the cameras are switching on screen, but, uh, it's, you can do it, I have one for tonight, but it's, uh, fire one more. It's, um, still working on estimates for a lot of these, we have that ready for each of the, possibly others. Set it up. So, I'm sorry, and, and, I have a nice place, especially in nineteen thirty.
Let's go here. Um, and included in that, I guess, the one that's important, I guess, this evening. We're all going to be happy when we get a new one of these, um, the one that we need to do this evening is the EMS station study, and that's the supplement for nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars, um, and that's to analyze the two different sites that are potential moving forward, um, it's a bunch of money, but I think that it kind of lays the groundwork for us to make a decision on spending potentially a substantial amount of money on EMS, on the future EMS station.
We have somebody in that to do it?
Um, yeah, what would y'all like to do here?
So, you mean appropriation?
Need a supplemental appropriation for nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars for an EMS station study.
I move, uh, to approve a supplemental appropriation to conduct an EMS station study to the term of nineteen thousand.
Second.
Motion's made in second, further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signature five percent nine, high, place same sign, um, Mr. Hobbs, anything else? So, Mr. Hobbs is, he's going through all of the minutes, all of his notes, it is, uh, quite a daunting task, um, and we appreciate it a bunch, I mean, it, it's a bunch.
Yeah, it's one, so, and Jackal, do you have a spreadsheet anywhere that, that has all of the resolutions, all the supplementals?
No, I just have the actual, uh, resolutions themselves, I don't do a spreadsheet.
Okay. They're all in one file?
And no P D F.
All right, good, throw that, yeah, look at R D A, look at that.
Yeah, they're working great. Um, I apologize, I need to go back to Mrs. Murray, um, Miss Murray, you need us to go hold a public hearing, you still in the line? Yes, ma'am, please explain to us. All right, um, Sean, you have any comment on this?
Um, briefly, um, the state, the state has a scheme for this, and there's a huge reputation, Madison is one of the few counties, um, oriented being kind of on the opposite end of the spectrum, Madison County has always been very much in favor of local property values, and, you know, where other counties can't wait to sell people's property and keep them from getting the proceeds, the challenge in this case is there's a protocol in court in terms of what they need to prove in order to obtain these funds, can every, Ms. Murray, can you hear me?
Should I get a microphone?
Yeah, and Ligon, you check your camera, because I don't think it's shooting this direction.
How, how's that? Um, here, here's the concern, when these funds are distributed by the court, the applicant for the funds has to prove what percentage of ownership that they have in the property, a concern I have is particularly if this is, you know, an heir property where there are sometimes literally hundreds of people, how much is appropriately going to be allocated to this person? If the board votes to have this public hearing, I believe it would be appropriate to require the applicant to provide evidence of a family tree and otherwise prove what their percentage ownership interest is in the property, and I think we tell them that in advance because if there are three hundred heirs, you know, they may choose not to pursue this because their share of this in this circumstance would be roughly ten dollars. What we want to avoid is a situation where we have a hearing, we have a vote, we vote funds over to the first applicant, his cousin finds out about it, he wants the same deal, and we just need to be very careful about that, those are my comments.
Um, all right, well, how do you? Sean, do you want to look into this and see if you can figure, I mean, I don't know who else to ask, I mean, it would seem.
I'm happy to give a report. I'm not inclined to do it tonight, because I really haven't studied the issue.
No, of course, of course.
You know, if we can just, you know, table this for our next regular meeting.
And then decide.
You know, better information. And one of the other things I'm going to want to do is review the lawsuit itself and make sure that, you know, we're following the right protocols.
And if I may, this case has been on the docket for years. And the final order was, was done a couple of years ago. I held the money for the two years. A couple heirs came forward, they went before the court, the court dispersed their money. Then some other heirs heard about it. We got down to the very last heir. I talked to her brother numerous times, we sent out letters to this woman, got nothing back. Her brother said he had a phone number for her, he said he called her many times, she was never calling back. She has done nothing to prove to us that she actually is the person. So that, just to make that clear too, I don't have any proof like I did with the other heirs. My concern is, like Sean said, we're not unclaimed property. You could be holding this money for years like unclaimed property, and suddenly an heir is going to come forward when they hear about it. Somewhere along the line, it seems to me like you've got to have a cutoff on it too. I mean, this has been, I held the money for two years, I turned it over to Stephanie over a year ago. So we're talking three years, somebody could have made a claim on it. Now, I agree, it's, it was her, I guess it was her father's grandmother's property? I'd have to go back, I'm like Sean, look at this. So in some ways, I feel like, yes, it's, she's entitled to the money. But I also think you're also setting something. When you went three years, how long are you going to sit on that money? And then somebody comes forward. If you're not unclaimed property, if the county's not in the position, I don't believe, where you can just sit on money forever and ever and let somebody make a claim.
And I agree with a lot of Ms. Laugh's points. But this is a policy decision that this board needs to make. The state code does make a policy decision. And that policy decision is two years. And it also requires a hearing in front of a circuit court judge. The disadvantage of what is being proposed here is we do not have any judicial review. The standards of proof and the burdens of proof are not as clear. And I think Ms. Laugh is exactly right. We want to encourage people to make their claims in a timely fashion while everybody is kind of aware of the circumstances. As I said, I will give a report tomorrow.
Let me look, Sean. I want to let Sean look into this, come back here in two weeks, make a report. I tend to agree with y'all. Two years long enough, close the thing, estate out, and then move on. Especially with the lack of follow-through this lady seems to have put into this as of the, to now. That work for everybody?
Yeah, I got a question, one question for Sean. So what part, if any, would the commissioner of accounts have in this?
Go on, wait, let's see, let's see what you find, Mr. Gregg, and then we'll go from there.
And to complete the answer to Mr. Yow, judicial tax sales are handled by the court. So the review of the records is done by the circuit court judge himself. It is not done through the commissioner of accounts.
That work for everybody? Come back to us in two weeks, get us something. Thank you, Ms. Murray, and I apologize. The, all right. The next one, proposed event regulation ordinance. Ligon, would you like to talk about it? Brian Gordon? Who would like to talk about this and why we have started this dialogue?
So, I guess a few weeks ago, there was an event at Graves Mountain, where they had some motocross, looked like a very great event. But they had quite a few attendees, and the emergency service folks, Brian and Sheriff, weren't aware of it until the day before. They made some accommodations, were able to patchwork some things together, but maybe they could explain it a little better. But it's essentially a situation where it felt like it had the potential for some potential emergency services could, really need to be notified, ideally a day before. So, we have quite a few events that are going on in the county. We do have the event ordinance. Now, it's not in the zoning ordinance, it's actually a standalone portion in a different part of the code. We, after this sort of situation, which fortunately went off without really any, any big problems, we started sort of talking, and Brian, Noah, and Sheriff, and myself, we're talking about potentially amending temporary event ordinance. And it's really not to be a pain to anybody that is doing these events, but just to be able to have a flexibility, sort of, meet with folks before an event, just so there'd be a heads up of what's going on. So, we looked at our, our ordinance, which was adopted in seventy-eight. We looked at Nelson County has a pretty good ordinance, Page County has a pretty good application. So, I went through it last week, and if you look on this, the red is some changes. So I sort of took the old ordinance and amended it, borrowed heavily from Nelson County, which is really, they do a lot of events with the Lock and Festival and different things. So they're sort of very used to these type of things. And I tried to tailor it to something that would be, you know, again, we're not trying to burden folks, not trying to necessarily be involved in everybody that has a few people get together on a property. But we thought for these large, commercial-scale events, if we had a little more just heads up on some of these things, that we could hopefully limit any kind of delay in response or whatnot, I think would happen. So basically, what we do here, and you get a chance to read it, and we can obviously aren't making big decisions tonight. But I take the events and divide it into two, two broad categories. Category one events, this came from Nelson. Category two events, and you have exempt events. And if you look at exempt events, which is on the second page, we're basically saying if you don't have five hundred people in your property, then you're exempt event. If you're a county fair, if you're a county-sponsored event, a school event, political gatherings, religious gatherings, basically non-commercial events would be exempt county events. And the reason county events are exempt is, it's not that we don't want to follow the rules, it's generally that we hope that the county has sort of followed this process, talked to emergency services, talked to the sheriff about traffic. But if you are a private event, and you are having over five hundred people, between five hundred and a thousand, what we would do is do a sort of in-house review, and you have that, you have that, that application. My office would just basically coordinate, and, you know, like I talked to Jack the other day, very simple. Do you have bathrooms? Have you contacted, how many people are going to come? What, what time is it going to start? What time is it going to end? Have you thought about these things? So it's, again, just to get an idea. You know, this event that's happened at Balltop with the concert, I mean, it's probably not going to be five hundred people. I don't know. Probably not. But if it is a big wedding event or something, we would, we would want these folks to at least come in the office so we would have a heads up. And it could be administratively approved. Now, the second-tier events would be over a thousand people. In that case, we would want about, you know, to come to the board. We feel like larger events, and again, I know Front Rural is going through something like this right now. Several other counties are adopting, again, the rural events have really become a big thing in the last few years. So if you're going to have a, you know, a gathering of over a thousand people, we would then want you in before the board, at least a month before the event, to sort of coordinate, make sure that application that I've given you has been filled out, and that we, you know, I say we, the the folks that really need to know where's traffic, where's, have you thought about your, you know, sanitation, garbage, things like that? So, it's a pretty standard ordinance. I think it just improves from the nineteen seventy-eight one a little bit, modernized it some. It, I don't think it's too burdensome. We're not, you know, we took out the violations, we're not trying to fine people a thousand dollars a day. We're just hoping that, you know, basically with this on the books, that folks would come forward and let us know in advance, just so we can, you know, counter any kind of issues that might come. So I guess if you read this, I think it's really, really. I guess we have a question for Sean. This is not in the, we can run this as a advertised ordinance amendment. Again, once we're all in agreement, if we are in fine agreement on this, and just advertise this as an ordinance amendment, it's a different section in the zoning ordinance, but just do a, kind of a regular ad.
We definitely need to do an advertisement for it, sitting here on our service, what the code requires in terms of notice.
Yeah, I would just assume you do two weeks, put it in the paper like a zoning amendments. But instead of going to the planning commission, it just would be something that the board could do at one of these meetings. And again, the idea is just to have, maybe, I think that the event ordinance just needs to be updated anyway. And I hopefully, this, these are acceptable, pretty reasonable. And I think that's just the intent. And we could move forward with it sometime, maybe in July, as a ordinance amendment. And what I can do in the interim, if we figure out when we want to advertise it, is send us to, you know, Graves, different, the different vineyards, breweries, just say, hey, look, this is what we're thinking about doing. Or this is what we're advertising, and just explain to them, it's, it's really, we already have this on the books. We just kind of want to improve it a little bit. And again, for the most part, I think for folks that are having those over five hundred people, my office can just handle it, and we can just make sure they have all of their licenses checked before an event.
Brian, do you have to add to this?
Biggest thing is we're not trying to put a burden on anybody. We don't, we don't want to charge anything, we just want to be aware of it, so if you have to say something, we can. We knew about this about two weeks prior, where we learned about it indirectly. And we were able to get things in front of it, and those group, got everybody up there, and did what we had to do. But this would just help in that process.
Y'all want to review this, we can talk about it at the upcoming meeting. And then have Mr. Gregg see if he can figure out what, if we do need to hold a public hearing, or if we just need to advertise, and then we can go from there. That work? Do you have anything else? What do y'all think about that one? Let's go down that, let's go down that path. Tracy, Ligon, whoever, I'm assuming that to everybody that would be most impacted. I think the big example on this motocross race down at Graves, it kind of struck me was, the last race had four hundred and seventy-three racers in it. And they didn't even give EMS or fire or anybody a map. And the Graves didn't have a map either of the track. So, I mean, there, there is a safety concern here, and we can respond.
Our resources are really limited. If we get into a situation where you had, out of four hundred people, change of action happened, and thirty, forty people get seriously injured, we've got a significant problem.
Need to do something that seems like an appropriate direction to go. Read through it, come back with the comments, hopefully we get some comments, and we can go from there.
Okay, yeah, that work?
That work for everybody? All right. Thank you both. Next, it's been brought up to our attention that we need to appoint someone. And it would seem like the appropriate person would be Michelle at the finance department. I spoke to her, we need to appoint her as interim finance director. The reason that we have to do that, the sheriff has two grants currently. And then we know Clarissa or the Commonwealth attorney will have two as well, that have to be signed by, it should be Mr. Hobbs, and then the finance director. If Mr. Hobbs isn't here, then it falls on me. We just need somebody in that title. At one time, it appears that Ms. Murray was doing it, they've kind of tightened up a little bit. It has to be finance director as the title. I don't think this comes with any expectations to become finance director or pay adjustment. It's just a temporary thing so we can apply and receive this funding. Does that sound about right, Sheriff?
Yes, sir.
There you go. Anybody have any heartache with this?
Mr. Chairman, it may be appropriate. Remember, it's a sign, just give them the title of interim finance director.
Yes, sir.
That should satisfy the requirement, and it satisfies your other concern about it creating any expectation.
Thank you. Like it to be interim finance director. Yes. Never heard that before, but yes, and also title. What's Michelle's last name?
Thacker.
Thacker, all right, Michelle Thacker. Somebody want to make a motion to this vote?
I move to approve Michelle Thacker as interim finance director.
Second?
Questions made and seconded, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify as I say aye.
Aye.
I place same sign. All right, any other new business? What about? Yes. We'll get to those at six, we're all excited for the six-year plan. Ms. Shepherd's not with us, she is ill. She'll be joining virtually, I understand, any information and correspondence. All right, back to public comment. Public comment. Public comment on video or here. Some here, Roger. Yes, sir. Push the button on the base. There you go.
All right, my name's Terry M. Bowden, Walker's Mill Lane. We bought Dila Farm about four years ago, moved from Rockingham County, sold a couple farms there and bought that. Love it here in Madison County. And thank you for considering Walker's Mill Road for the rural rustic program. I met with Alan Saunders, oh, it's before COVID hit. And we looked over the property, walked over the road, and he already been up and down the road and discussed it, and then COVID hit. So that was kind of the end of that. And then I, I talked with Jeff Gar, he's the supervisor here at Madison County. And looked some drainage. I looked at some drainage issues and other things, and real gentleman of a guy, really did a nice job, fixed some drainage problems, and, uh, really good working with them people. Then I met with, uh, Carrie, had a phone conversation with her over the phone, discussed it, and, uh, kind of brought her up to speed, I think, uh, emailed and texted, uh, the chairman, appreciate you, uh, responding to my email. But just like to, hope you consider that, put that on the six-year plan. I know it's not going to happen tomorrow, next year, or the next year after that, maybe never. At least like to get, uh, consider to be put on the plan.
What, Walkers Mill, what root number is that?
I don't know. You asked me that before, and I don't know.
All right. We've got about an hour, we'll, we'll find, figure it out.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Um, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Um, oh, yes, ma'am.
Sir, um, I thought the, um, the six-year plans for the road, hearing was at six.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. Just general public comment, more than welcome to say, Mr. M. Bowden, we, we, we do hear your comment though, either way. Uh, but yes, at six. Um, any other public comment? Going to do this multiple more times. All right. Um, we do have closed session this evening. That's what we've got to do. Yes, ma'am.
I move that the board convene in a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Sections A 2.2-3711, A 7 for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, or such consult, consultation or briefing at open meetings would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. And B, 2.2-3711, A 1 for discussion on the appointment of the finance director and county administrator.
Second.
Question made, seconded. Further discussion here in all in favor, single, five, say aye. I, I have the same sign. All right, let's take a moment. Walk outside, go outside, run a screen on us, good Lord. Uh, yeah, no, we haven't met since the eleventh event. I did. I didn't. Oh, that's two years ago. That's here.